Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We will be getting started. We're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, sir. Okay, first up, we have citizens for non-agenda items. Ms. Patsy Martin, you have three minutes. You start with your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Patsy Martin, and I live at 223 Glen Tower. Before I begin discussing the purpose of my coming before you tonight, I would like to thank the council for the excellent job that you all have done. You have been instrumental in making sure that the repairing of the streets and drainage have been done. And that was what this resounding overwhelming vote was for. When you took your office, we said that's what we wanted, and that's what you've done. So my congratulations to you for helping us. You have been responsive, professional, and you have done your job without the drama we have seen in past years. You effectively negotiated a certificate of obligation in the city and at a very low interest rate, resulting in repair of one of the worst drainage problems in the city. In my neighborhood, it's affectionately called the River Banyan. So we thank you for that, among all the other additional numerous streets that you have been responsible for being repaired. We're so happy to see people in our city enjoying streets that are safe to drive on, walk on, and play on. Glen Tower residents, however, are not able to say that about our street. We have lived in Castle Hills for forty-four years, and that time we were told each year that our street would be on the list next year to be repaired. Finally, the people on Glen Tower felt we were going to see that happen. Unfortunately, a group of people decided to get a petition together to stop the next certificate of obligation from addressing the needs of the next round of streets, Glen Tower being the first one on the list. A group of people convinced our neighbors to sign their petition, telling them all kinds of things that were not based in fact, and that we needed to have a special election to determine whether we should negotiate another CO. By the way, these same people have had their streets repaired. They told a lot of stories about why we shouldn't allow our council to continue doing their job as they had done previously. One of the most preposterous stories that was told was about our council and that the money would be used to increase their salary. I think all of us know that you're non-salaried, so my question is, what do you do to increase a non-salaried position? So nevertheless, people that had their streets in good shape stopped progress on those of us who have not had the advantage of having our streets repaired. These people have caused the city to schedule a special election in November that will cost thousands of dollars to negotiate a new bond that will be at a higher interest rate from the previous certificate of obligation. But we need to have our infrastructure fixed. So in closing, I urge each of you to vote for the bond issue on our ballot in November. We will be moving forward the infrastructure improvements to our city, resulting in a more beautiful and safer city for all of us to enjoy. Thank you, council. Good night.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Cindy Martinez.
How do you follow Patsy Martin? My name is Cindy Martinez. I live at 314 Tamworth Drive. My husband, Michael, son Thomas, and I have been residents of Castle Hills for thirteen years now. I said eleven the other day, but it's thirteen. When we first moved to Castle Hills, I honestly didn't put a whole lot of effort into getting to know what was going on in the city. I would jump onto Lock Hill Selma and go about my day, come back home. But then, when my son started to attend Castle Hills Elementary School, well, I actually had to drive in the city. And I was surprised to see how my wonderful city had such horrible roads. As part of my job, I drive all over southeast, all the way to Converse, all the way to Somerset. And I felt like the streets that I was driving on in the city were some of the worst I had ever driven on. And here was Castle Hills, a city I'd grown up near and aspired to live in one day, and was surprised that it was not what I thought. So we would drive down Banyan, basically, to Carolwood to get to Castle Hills, and it was like a rickety roller coaster ride. And then it rained, our first big rain, and the whole area flooded. We were fortunate that our street was safe, and we would know something was going on because we'd get a lot of increased traffic on Tamworth. That seems to be the border of where we're okay. We had looked at so many houses in Castle Hills, and man, I breathed a sigh of relief that we were not one of the ones in, what did you call it, River Banyan? So here we are now. We have this awesome city council and mayor and city manager who want to elevate our city and move forward. Our street looks great. The drainage project has greatly improved the safety and efficiency of the streets that we live near. I was happy for my neighbors getting much-needed street repairs. One of the things that happens when you fix the roads is that you have more neighbors getting out and walking and moving around. You get to know your community better. My favorite math teacher back in high school always said, "If you're not actively building up, then your lack of action is tearing down." When I heard that the progress on roads and drainage had come to a halt, that old saying came to mind. Why would we not want to build up our city? This is our community. We live here. Why wouldn't we want our community as a whole to be a better place to live? I'm sad for my neighbors that did not get their roads fixed. I'm sad for our community that now someone whose road has been fixed would not want their neighbor to get their road fixed. We don't have to be besties with each other, but we all eventually drive on many of the roads in our cities. So ultimately, it does affect us all. I urge council and my neighbors, please vote to keep our city roads and drainage projects going. Let's build up our city and not let it fall apart. Thank you for that opportunity to share my thoughts.
Okay, do we have anybody else that'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am. I had you for budget or community, whichever way you like. You can come up right after this lady. Your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Claudia Gonzalez. I and my family are residents on the estates here in Castle Hills. We're homeowners. And we, I just wanted to come here today. I think oftentimes there aren't families with young children who come to these, and you can see why. But I just wanted to come today, and I'd seen some buzz on social media and talk about police and different things. But as a family, I just wanted to...
Sorry, you can't stop Wonder Woman.
I just wanted to speak on how important the police... I just wanted to speak how important the police and the fire departments are to our family and to young families in Castle Hills. And I, in my family, fully support them in every way, and I hope that their teams always have the tools and the team members that they need to get the job done. Because when we were looking for homes and chose Castle Hills, safety and security was the top of our list. And so that is really, I just wanted to speak to that today super quickly, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Haley?
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Denise Haley. I live at 220 Lundblade Lane, and this December, I will have lived at 220 Lundblade Lane for thirty-six years. And they have been years full of joy and fun and getting to know people and also some things that might not reflect all that well on our community, but that's not what I want to talk about today. We've talked about the residents and the citizens of our community, and what I want to talk about are our corporate citizens and our businesses and the taxes and the investment that they have in our community the same way that we as residents have in our community. And I got on Bear Appraisal today just for fun to look at some of our large office buildings, and I started with the Pope Dawson Building at 2000 Northwest Loop 410. And Pope Dawson pays over eighty thousand dollars in property taxes to the city of Castle Hills through their real estate and another eight thousand plus just for their personal effects, the personal property that they have. And I would imagine if we look at every business, a building like that and corporate entities, we would see that there's a lot of money brought into the city by those businesses. And also, the personal property, every office building, they pay taxes. And then in every office building, there are people in those offices, and they're out going to lunch at restaurants in Castle Hills or shopping, picking up something in Castle Hills. And if they're in this city, whoever is in this city at any time, they're our citizens, whether they actually sleep here or they're here Monday through Friday or Sunday or Saturday. It, we're, they're ours. And if we want to talk about cutting back on police, oh, let's not fill those positions. We really don't, nobody's complaining. Well, I say, stop talking about cutting back on those services and start working on getting them filled. Because we have a community full of people, and I heard one time that I, two hundred and forty thousand people every day go in and out of this community. And if they're here, they're ours. And if something happens, we have the responsibility for them. And I think we need to be more intentional about making sure that we fulfill that. And I know that's something that you all, we all, you just, it doesn't come up. You know, we get stuck on home, home residents and our residents. Well, I believe that these... Sam Dawson is as big a resident of Castle Hills, a citizen, as I am. And he pays eighty thousand, eighty, eighty times more taxes every year to the city than I do. And I just want us to remember that as we look at our community and think big. Think about all of that and how we can maximize more of that, which will help ease some of the responsibility on the homeowners who live here and enjoy living here like I do. And I thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of you for the work you do. You, you, nobody gets a salary. You're up here serving. And you do this because you feel called to do that, and I applaud you for that. And I don't believe you get enough thank yous for that, so I want to do that tonight. Thank you very much.
I had you down for the budget, but you're more than welcome to speak on non-agenda.
If that's okay with you. I just wanted to make a comment about the budget and just reiterate some of the things that have been spoken about to... I'm sorry, Robert Wynn, 209 Gardview. We've heard a lot about Castle Hills being a great place to live, and there's no question about that. I've lived here over thirty years, and that is a great place to live. We have dedicated, hard-working employees, and we appreciate that. And I think we need to recognize that. But I think we also need to recognize that Castle Hills has a lot of hard-working, dedicated taxpayers, and we're the ones that keep the lights on. And we appreciate you keeping us in your thoughts and concerns and making your decisions because we're the ones that make sure bills are paid. And we want to be able to continue to pay the bills and make sure y'all continue to have a good place to work. And I think it's a good place to work from what I've heard, from everybody I've talked to as far as employees. It's, it's just important that you don't kill the goose that lays the golden egg. So please keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to the consent agenda. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I'll second.
Second, by Mr. Joyce, any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. First up, we have item six point one, public hearing on an amendment to the zoning ordinance to add section fifty dash four five six to set out additional requirements for shared group housing for disabled persons. It is six forty-eight, and we are going to open the public hearing. If we don't have anybody signed up, we will close the public hearing at six forty-eight and proceed into item six point two, discussion of possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine dash one three, amending the zoning ordinance to add section fifty dash four five six to set out additional requirements for shared group housing for disabled persons. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, mayor. This item had gone to zoning. I believe they had a couple of public hearings there and discussed the options of amending this section. And they unanimously approved it to city council to recommend approval tonight. Mr. Shaw has some of the details laid out in the ordinance specific to this amendment, and I'll defer to him on those. And like I said, zoning approved this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the zoning committee to dealing with ordinance number two zero two two dash oh nine dash one three.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Mr. May. Do we have a discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have item six point three, public hearing on application submitted by Walk-In Inc., sixty eighteen, West Avenue, CB five zero zero six B Block, Lot Four, THCB one fifty for the proposed substantial exterior renovation of a suite at an existing strip mall. It is six fifty, and we will open the public hearing. If there's nobody signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing at six fifty and proceed into item six point four, discussion of possible action on a recommendation of the Architecture Review Committee on a application submitted by Walk-In Inc., sixty eighteen, West Avenue, CB five zero zero six B Block, Lot Four, THCB one five zero for the proposed substantial exterior renovation of a suite at an existing strip mall. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, mayor. This went to ARC last Wednesday night, application submitted by Walk-In. There's a representative, I believe, Eric Lee, if he's here, to discuss with you the project in details. The Architecture Review Committee approved this unanimously last Wednesday night. And so you can hear from the applicant if you have any questions specific to the building that's going to be modified for the new Walk-In.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Mayor, I approve that we accept the recommendation of the Architects Review Committee on the application submitted by Walk-In.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. A second by Ms. Gaines, any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Council, I want to be moving up item six point one three, if you don't mind. Discussion of possible action on a letter of support from the City of Castle Hill City Council to San Antonio Water System, requesting City of Castle Hills name to remain on the elevated tank slash water tower at West Avenue. As many of you all are aware, SARS has been remodeling the water tower right behind St. George. It's right there at the corner of West Avenue and Northwest Military. Over the course of the last, maybe, three years, Mr. Rapley?
Since two thousand and nineteen, I provided the background that basically they had started the project, the engineering pool permits. It was kind of stalled out during COVID, but originally in the attached packet, there's a letter from former mayor Howe requesting this. So basically around May two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. So since two thousand and nineteen, we've been informally reaching out to SARS and asking them what it would look like for us to make sure that the name City of Castle Hills remained on the water tower, and since then, we haven't got a real good answer except for that's not our policy. And my response back has been, well, what would it take for us to make that work? We're not asking that it's done for free, but we'd like to at least know what it would cost or what options are available. And we haven't got a good response back or a response that I am satisfied with, is a shorter way to say it. So what I have before us tonight is an agenda item for council, full council support, for me to go to a SARS board meeting to express this as a concern for the City of Castle Hills. I think that being one of the biggest structures in our city and the fact that the City of Castle Hills is still up there on the tower to this day, it's something important and provides kind of a landmark, if you will, to the City of Castle Hills. And more importantly, the fact that the contractors are currently working there right now would make it cheaper to do it now as opposed to waiting for the scaffolding to be down and the contractors to be gone and then having to come relocate solely for that. So council, if you will, my hope is that y'all are supportive of me going and being able to speak to the SARS trustees with your full backing. I'll entertain any kind of discussion. We have our motion. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, I would move that we direct the city staff to draft a letter of support to be signed by all members of the city council requesting that SARS attend to the issue of the name of the City of Castle Hills remaining on the elevated water tower and that the mayor represent the city council at the next meeting of SARS to verbally articulate our request to them.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. We have a second by Mr. May. Any discussion? Mr. May?
I just want to comment that I think it's really important that we have these kind of signposts. In this case, it's bluewashing out the reality that this is Castle Hills, and this is a community, and we take pride in that. And so I fully endorse this, and I hope we all vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. I look forward to representing council and the city at the next SARS board meeting. Going back, we will proceed to item six point five, discussion of possible action by record vote on ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine dash one three dash A to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating budget for the City of Castle Hills. Mr. Rapley?
I think just said, okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, council. Everyone in attendance, we appreciate you being here and hearing the council-proposed budget. I present to you the FY twenty-three council-proposed budget tonight. Originally, when I filed it, it was the city manager budget, and it's had a lot of changes in the last four weeks or so. And so I wanted to be able to show those differences, talk about some budget highlights, some other areas that we've incorporated into the budget. And then I left a handout for everyone, council, the audience, and we'll have online that shows all the budget sort of facts and highlights of this budget. We have spent over six weeks and seven meetings on the proposed budget. Early in the process, city council asked me to revisit the budget, find areas to reduce, sharpen that pencil for expenditures, which has been done. Council also asked me to do this by looking at ways to reduce the tax rate and get relief due to increase of assessed values appraisals on the rise. Another goal was to incorporate a higher cost of living adjustment for the employees to ensure we are competitive and we are able to recruit and retain for this upcoming budget. We also looked at surrounding cities' compensation of their employees to to ensure we're in line with other cities, especially in public, safety, police, and related to fire as well. One of the goals accomplished was by adjusting the base salary of our patrol officers. This adjustment to the entry-level police base salary was about forty-seven thousand five hundred, and we moved it to the average of the twelve or thirteen cities we looked at to fifty-one thousand to compete with area cities who are also looking for police officers. As I mentioned to city council at an earlier meeting, my goal was to work with council as directed on developing sort of an art of compromise, a happy meeting with y'all to ensure that we, you know, work to reduce the tax rate, collect enough to operate and be able to do some of these modifications that also helped our employees. My goal again was to work on developing as directed on a alternative tax rate, which was the median that's proposed tonight, to incorporate these items into the adopted budget and work to decrease the burden to individual residents due to the rise in appraisals, thus recommending the median tax rate between the voter approval and the no new revenue rate. Right here, I'm just showing the changes for when I submitted the budget. It didn't include a COLA. It was a voter approval rate, point five two two five four four. That would have provided us additional revenue of two hundred and thirteen thousand. And again, the city manager proposed would have been for revenue, seven million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, six ninety-two, if the voter approval rate was put into place. Didn't include the additional personnel, unfunded requests, fire department equipment, and improvements to the commons at the time. I show a change of ninety-one thousand, five ninety, increased revenue due to the median tax rate that's in front of you for tonight, that's incorporated into this city council budget. Changing gears, looking over there on the council-proposed budget line, council proposed includes a four percent COLA for our employees, includes a baseline salary adjustment for patrol officers of nineteen thousand, two forty, includes thirty-six thousand, five hundred of budget decreases in expenditures from the general fund. American Rescue Plan utilized to address purchases for fire department equipment, phase three, fire department renovations, public works is included in there, traffic signs, and then emergency management expenses out of ARPA for equipment that was needed. This actually is something that we had been talking about through the Emergency Management Committee, and so we're able to fund some of the ideas that came from this Emergency Management Committee, like getting a trailer ready to deploy barricades, and then most importantly, getting a new notification alert system. Further decrease to the tax rate from the city manager of VAT proposed to the median between no new revenue and the voter approval rate, point five eight six eight eight to assist residents with the assessed value impact. Timeline, I delivered the budget on August ninth. Seventeenth August, we'd published notices for the hearing, and then we had the public hearing last Tuesday night, and then tonight for adoption. In total, we've had seven meetings since July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two to discuss the FY proposed budget and the FY twenty-two tax rate. I just highlighted some areas. Personnel, obviously, we're not including any new personnel in this budget, and we are adjusting the baseline for our patrol officers. The budget as a whole is seven million, six eighty, one oh two million, and expenses are balanced at seven million, six eighty, one oh two, includes a thirty-six thousand, five hundred decrease from the city manager budget to the council budget. Capital expenses, as I mentioned, finishing out improvements to the fire department, and then software for them to run their database, and then the equipment that was requested by Chief Lodwig, which was the extraction, the struts, and I know you had something else in the wishlist there, but it's all-inclusive in there. Cost of living adjusted four percent. The city identified twelve streets for reconstruction for drainage projects in different watersheds. Street reconstruction, originally, we had about three million and a half, and then drainage, three and a half. Obviously, funding for these projects uh, requires future funds. Timeline, historical, uh, two thousand eighteen, point five zero one, three, four, five. Two thousand nineteen, point four eight zero six one nine. Two thousand twenty, point five one six zero three eight. And then the current operating budget and we're in FY twenty-two, which is associated with the twenty-one tax rate. Is five two four eight nine nine. And then again. I have down here at the bottom. I'm sorry, it's cut off with the. Proposed tax rate calendar year. The five oh eight, six eighty-eight medium rate between no new revenue rate and four ninety-four, eight thirty-one. And the voter approval rate of point five two. Sorry, Mayor. This is clicker is not working. It's. Up to par. Got it. There we go. City council has made uh, major strides over the last three years in streets and drainage. Utilize the capital improvements plan as a tool to guide the necessary projects. The updated street CIP, which detailed only twenty percent of the streets in good condition in November two thousand eighteen. That number is closer to sixty-four percent as a result of the reconstructed streets. Will continue to rise as we close out uh, Watlin, Blewett, Briar Cliff and Shalamar. City has also addressed two major areas which were prone to flooding, Banyan Phase One and Phase Two. And as I mentioned, city identified twelve streets for reconstruction and four drainage, watersheds, streets and drainage. What I wanted to take a moment, uh, counsel is to provide a response. From a resident who made comments in regards to the CIP for streets. Um, our engineers from RPS. Uh, did not take this lightly. They asked me to read this into the record. And I felt during our capital projects, this is a good response in regards to that. This is from RPS, Corey Benavides. Uh, and just give me a second, Mayor. RPS made aware of comments out loud about the previous council meeting. Uh, the city manager sent us copy of these comments in an email uh, September seventh. In the letter, the concerned resident discussed the city of Castle Hills cast. CIP, capital improvement plan FY twenty-two, twenty-five. The letter details issues and concerns that residents. Has with the recommendations and implementation of the CIP. The first issue are the residents concerned about the differing OCI scores within a street. For example. The letter mentioned segment zero forty, zero four zero, which is Roletto. Roletto is actually divided into three segments, each with a separate OCI score. This is based on intersecting streets and length of streets. This provides more accurate scores for each street and provides construction limits. Roletto Drive was recently reconstructed for Northwest Military Lemonwood Drive. So that I see um, OCI score has actually changed, has been updated based on the current street condition. The next concern from the resident is the engineering recommendations. A recommendation from the engineer is based on I see OCI score of that same uh, segment. Funding availability, construction planning, including the traffic control and utility concerns and contractor availability. Once the city determines which streets it wants to rehabilitate, the engineer provides a cursory review of the streets to ensure the proper street maintenance recommendation is followed. Or if a section of street can utilize a method based on contractor and product availability. RPS developed the street maintenance plan SMP in two thousand nineteen in conjunction with the CIP. The SMP has assisted with guiding the maintenance. Micro surface work over has been conducted the last three years, close to thirty streets and the comments. The resident singles out a couple of streets that were categorized as mill and overlay candidates in the CIP report. As part of the recommended streets for micro surface this year, RPS independently reviewed each street. Segment as a part of the June recommendations and provided a separate maintenance recommendation. And base repairs if necessary with the street limits that completed this uh, provided section that could be micro surface included. Buckaroo, Antler and South Winston. RPS submitted the initial CIP in two thousand eighteen. To the city of Castle Hills and has since provided updates that include completed roadway projects and identified future projects which have been approved. And posted to the city's website. The latest version was submitted earlier this year, February twenty-two, which shows drastic improvements in the city streets. From twenty-three point eight percent considering poor condition to just nine percent in poor condition. At the end of twenty-one. RPS has utilized years of experience. Uh, in street rehabilitation, designing, constructing projects through the central Texas region. Including the city of San Antonio and Bear County. RPS projects throughout the central Texas region, including the city of San Antonio, Bear County. RPS is part of construction management, engineering and inspection services for over three hundred streets throughout the city of San Antonio. And uh, city of San Antonio Street Maintenance Program. RPS continues to provide timely, quality, deliverable. A high level of response service which has resulted. In the city of San Antonio renewing our contract, selecting us as multiple contracts over the past four years. City Castle Hills hired E RPS to be on call and as needed professional. Service associated with the design, construction management, inspection permitting for street reconstruction. Street rehabilitation and drainage projects. RPS has worked for the city Castle Hills for over six years and has designed several projects that have been constructed, including the Banyan Phase One and Phase Two. Antler Drive Reconstruction. RPS strongly believes that those projects which were identified. Through the drainage CIP and the master drainage plan, both completed by RPS. Have provided improved safety and mobility for the residents of Castle Hills. RPS recommends another payment condition survey using vehic- vehicular scanner to provide the city. Due to all the progress and updated scores to update the scores with city Castle Hills since it's been over five years since uh. Since it's been over five years since the condition survey is completed. RPS is a strong relationship with city Castle Hills. And has appreciated the opportunity to provide civil engineering services, stands by their work product and looks forward to continuing working with the city and its staff. Um, they asked me to read that into the record tonight as part of this as a response and I felt it was. Uh, the right time under capital approvals because um, again. We've used this as a tool and a basis for all the capital projects that got done in this community. And you know, one of my priorities was coming in early in my tenure was to put together a capital improvements plan. And that was based on my experience in other cities because the plan works, but most importantly. I'm not an engineer. I don't, I don't have a PE. You know, and I know the CIP takes vast engineering and that's why I engaged RPS at the time. Um. You know, I I I don't understand the comments. Um. And it's easy to throw rocks and on the sidelines, you know, um. Especially in the past, there's been opportunities to do things in streets and drainage. But you know, I I wanted to digress a little bit to say, I've been in twenty years in city government and I worked for five cities. Number of good city managers and they always said. You hire the experts, you hire the fire chief, you hire the police chief and you hire the city engineer to help you run the organization. Because they are the experts and you rely on their expertise, knowledge and abilities to provide you the information. So I just want to make sure that's into the record. Mayor and council. Next slide. Mayor, you want to hit the button, please? Uh, American Rescue Plan Funds, we've talked about this, last year's budget, we utilized two hundred ninety-seven thousand. Uh, this year includes about a hundred and nine thousand of expenditures related to fire department, public works and emergency management. Uh, capital expenses again are phase three of the fire department. That'll finish out all the improvements of the building. Uh, the software, including the equipment at fifty thousand. And then twenty-five thousand for emergency management and public work expenditures. After this leaves seven hundred and one thousand, zero sixty-four for further and fu- future use of the ARPA fund. The budget highlights, I know it's kind of hard to see on the screen. It's essentially what's been handed out to the audience. Um. I can go through that relatively quick for you, Mayor and Council. But I wanted to make sure these are the highlights. Obviously, a balanced budget at seven million, six eighty, one oh two. Basic services are maintained at current levels. Total budget difference from the FY twenty-two adopted to now the council proposed had a growth of about two point eight. The proposed tax median is a reduction of about two cents from the tax rate of twenty-two that was proposed under the ver- uh, voter approval. The proposed tax rate with the median between the no new revenue and the voter approve. Is optional to, as council directed to assist residents due to the escalation assessed values. Rate effects uh, average on taxable values. It went from three hundred and fifty-seven thousand to three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Just a note, this does not affect sixty-five or over those participating in a property tax freeze. Does not include additional personnel, four percent cola. No increase to the cost to the healthcare for our employees. Um. The six hundred and twenty-nine thousand is a projection that represented unexpendited expenditures and total fund. Through June thirtieth, as we prepared the proposed budget. It's not a surplus mainly due to current vacancies. A surplus will be identified once the FY twenty-two audit is complete and the auditor says there is a surplus. Any surplus would be transferred to the supplemental street and drainage fund. Following ordinance number eleven oh six. Captures the one-time cost of American Rescue Plan Funds. Provide funding again for our departments, mainly the fire department. Sorry, chief, it's probably out there. Uh, and then fund balance and reserves over six months, which protects the city from future uncertainties. So I want to extend my appreciation to city council for their contribution for attending all these meetings. Uh, I know keep people kept saying you don't get paid, you don't get paid. Um, and I appreciate all your thoughts, input, wisdom. On preparing this budget and direction, most importantly. I would like to thank you for reviewing budget documents, providing guidance and developing the proposed budget. I would also like to express my appreciation to city staff for their input and hard work. And striving to maintain the highest level of services to the citizens and businesses Castle Hills. And I want to reiterate, I want to thank you, counsel. For the consideration of four percent. I know I looked at five percent and I know that would have been increased cost. And would have probably taken a little bit more on the tax rate. But um, I just want to say thank you for at least providing the four percent to them because I know they appreciate it and. Uh, they're working hard. Um, they're a bit stretched uh, in all areas. Um. But but they put a smile on their face and we get things done on a day to day and um, we're here to serve the residents of Castle Hills. Thank counsel.
Thank you, Mister Rapley. Uh. We have one person sent in to speak, Douglas Gregory. Okay. Uh, Mister Paul.
Mister Rapley, I have a couple of questions real quick. Last week, the citizen did their best to brought this report forward. To basically criticize you, criticize council. That we didn't know what we were doing and we were just giving you a pass on doing everything. While the person was putting this report together, did they ever once reach out to you and say, hey? I'm looking at these streets. Do you think maybe this? Do you think maybe that? Was there any conversation whatsoever or was it just? Something on their own without getting the true information?
Uh, no, sir, and.
Never, never reached out to you. So we're just presenting stuff that might look good for me or or the person presenting. Okay.
Yeah, again, I. Welcome anybody to sit down with our engineers.
That's what I was gonna say. Have you ever turned anybody away from that? See, the point I'm getting at is. We're here for the city and the only way any of us can help the city is if we communicate. We have questions. We have ideas, we have something we want to talk about, bring them into the city manager. Don't sit back and write these phony reports just to try to justify that somebody thinks that. They want to get rid of this or we're not doing our job or whatever. I don't mind people having their opinion. They just can't have their own facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Paul. Uh, Mister Esbrand.
Um, before, before we take the vote on the budget tonight, I'd I'd just like to make a couple. Comments on observations. First of all, I do want to thank the city manager, the staff, the council. And the members of the public that have weighed in constructively on our budget process. Um. When we began the workshops on the budget and Mister Rapley, I think you recalled for us that this was on July twelfth when we began this process. This is a. A process we go through every year that takes at least two months to get done so that we can methodically look at um, how how we prepare. The budget to provide essential services to the city. At that very first workshop on July twelfth, I recall that even before any numbers or any real discussion began. That we put on the table the notion that we all recognized what inflation was doing at this time, what increased property values, what kind of impact that they were having. I think we lamented at that July meeting that our electric bills, at least some of us by that time had seen them literally double over the course of the last month and water bills and food and everything else. That has happened along the way. And I remember at the July twelfth meeting, I was very uh, strongly saying. That as this budget was put together, we wanted all those factors taken into account. And for it to have as little financial impact on the residents of this city as it possibly could. That was July twelfth. That's, you know, sixty days ago plus that we began discussing this. On August ninth, Mister Rapley, you uh, you brought forward the city manager proposed budget. At that time, you had in it. The uh, the current tax rate and we'll talk about tax rate in a separate agenda item. But you you talked about uh, a- as you indicate here, the voter approval tax rate of point five two two five four four is part of that budget. And I recall that at that time, what we asked uh, of you was to go back and take another look at the budget. To see where you could continue to do some trimming without doing damage. But that we we again take into account the impact that inflation and economic conditions are having on the city. On August sixteenth, our next uh, uh, budget workshop, you you brought back that proposed reduced budget. And I'm very appreciative for the work that the department heads and you and the city staff put into that. And really looked for ways to be as efficient as possible um, along the way. And as a result of that, you also brought forward the notion of this median tax rate. So we've been talking about this tax rate. Potential tax rate for over two months now too. It's not something that just magically appeared. Anyone who's informed or has followed these proceedings knows that this has been out there for a while. And the whole point of that, the whole point of this exercise has been. So if we had left the tax rate at where it was in the proposed budget when you first brought it to us. It would have been up here, so to speak. And we would in theory be have access to thirty percent more tax dollars from these new property valuations. Than the tax rate that we're going to talk about tonight, which is going to be thirty-two, nearly thirty-two percent less. At the same time, you were able to find a way to present us with a balanced budget. That trims but does not cut bone. We don't know what the economy is going to do over the course of the next six months, the next year. We have an obligation to ensure the health and well-being of the city. To ensure that essential services are provided to every resident there. And I think the exercise that has taken place with this budget and with the tax rate demonstrates a real commitment. To have as little financial impact on the residents of this city. While at the same time ensuring that the caliber of services that you deserve are going to be delivered to you in the year ahead. Irrespective of other challenges that may take place with the economy. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved with this process and has come uh, forward with facts. And accurate information and been a part of the healthy discussion that has taken place here. And I feel very strongly tonight that our ability to present a budget. That funds all of our positions. That raises the the uh, salary of police patrol officers so that we can be competitive with other cities. And retain those officers is doing exactly what needs to be done to ensure the caliber of quality. That residents and those who unfortunately live outside of Castle Hills know this city for, that it is a great place to live. We take our job seriously and we take very seriously our ability to provide. The services that you deserve and pay for without asking for anything more than taking care of that. So I want to thank the city staff and Mister Rapley. And I hope that it helps those of you who may be coming into this budget discussion for the first time. To understand these are not things that just magically happened over the course of a week or or whatever. But this has been a discussion that has been going on since July and has been a very thoughtful and thorough discussion. And I commend my council colleagues for the seriousness by which they deliberated this too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to answer your question on the screen, the difference that could have been collected was a two thirteen versus a ninety-one, so about a hundred and. So about a hundred and twenty one thousand. That the city could have collected in revenue, but didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. May.
Mr. Rappley, again, I want to commend you for the hard work you put into this. And for me, the number one reason why this is a reasonable budget and we should adopt it. Is it shows strong support for our police and our city employees. The police have a hard job, a dangerous job. Recent vintage, the things that have happened on the periphery. Are directly the consequence of increased crime and some of that very violent crime. So to given to certain pressures for radical cuts in tax rates, for example, would literally defund. And I want to put it on the record, I'm never going to stand for that. And I applaud the other part of this budget, which is. Your proposal is four percent, well deserved for city employees, including the police. Yet tonight, we have reported from all news sources. That the inflation rate from August last year to this was unexpectedly higher. It was eight point three percent. That's what caused the huge stock market drop today. So we need to wake up and pay attention to what's happening in our world that we can control. And I think that you did that in how you tempered the and structured the COLA. And at the same time, you maintained a commitment to what's important to residents on a daily basis, which is streets and drainage. And I hope to continue that in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank Mr. Rockley and the staff for a great job in leading us through this long, arduous process. It wasn't easy. Thank you for the many, many hours, especially Ms. Davis and yourself. We appreciate that very much. And I personally am delighted that the budget has been able to take care of staff. The police officers that have been mentioned, especially the cost of living, I think that four percent because that's across the board. With one exception, and I think we need to fix that. But in any event. I'm very pleased with this budget. I also like to make some editorial comments, if I may. We live in a beautiful, peaceful community with lots of terrific people. Which makes it all the more tragic that our tranquility is often broken. By hair on fire emails by a former councilwoman. These emails are typically long on her verbally and short on context and facts. And is designed to stir up resentment and anger toward the target of the day. Which in this case is city council. The latest titled, What Happened on September sixth? Paints council members as thoughtless lemmings, bumbling their way through the budget process. Greedily looking for any opportunity to raise taxes. This, of course, is not the case. Your council members have been elected by substantial majorities or even unopposed. It would seem the height of folly for us to take that mandate in order to make our supporters' lives more difficult. As pointed out by Mr. Isbrand, we've had many, many meetings. Actually, the last week's last week's meeting was the seventh budget meeting. And we've requested no new tax budget scenarios, reviewed and reflected on them, asked lots of questions. And now believe we've arrived at a compromise budget that balances the needs of the city. Especially staff needs with the tax burden on citizens. We've done all that we could to lower the tax rate and at the same time, keep our fine staff happy and not looking at other cities. One of the costliest mistakes we could make as the leaders of this community is to lose staff members. If we go with a no new tax scenario, that's exactly what would happen. I can't believe that anybody pays attention to these emails anymore. The arguments are worn and tired with no helpful solutions proposed. Last week, the former councilwoman suggested that we should keep staff levels as they are, because services have remained steady. We're down two police positions at this time. And as previously mentioned, our PD does a great job keeping us safe, but it's getting tougher and tougher. A few months back. You may recall that two women were shot and killed at Blanco on four ten. Shortly after that, a young man was shot and killed at the LA Fitness on Blanco near four ten. Where many Castle Hills residents, including yours truly, workout. Last Thursday, there was an early morning armed robbery at the Burger King on West Avenue. So I don't think now is the time to make do with current police shortfalls. We should at least be at full force, ready for the crime that's not on its way. It's already here. This is the reality. Anyone who would suggest operating at less than optimal police force readiness. For the sake of a few tax dollars and risk the safety of our citizens, school kids, businesses and visitors. Is either blind to reality or supporting an agenda not based in the best interests of our city. Friends and neighbors, I urge you all to please do your homework before taking any message in an email or other correspondence as truth. Review the minutes, look at the budgets or contact me or any one of our council members or staff. We'd be happy to visit with you and answer your questions and review whatever you need. That will keep us closer to the peace and tranquility we all want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Joyce, for those for those heartfelt words. I appreciate that. I also would like to thank city staff and Mr. Rappley. This is my first budget cycle on council and it has been very informative. It's been a learning experience for me. For those of you who aren't aware, maybe this is your first meeting in the cycle of of sixty days worth of meetings. We have put a lot of thought into this. We have learned a lot. We've asked a lot of Mr. Rappley. He's come back to us many times with. With different scenarios. I feel like I have feedback. Try to talk softer. We appreciate all the work that you've put into this. You've met with me personally separately to help explain some things that that I. Didn't understand from years past when I wasn't on council and I appreciate that time that you've given. I think that we have put together a very good budget. I think that we're going to be able to meet all of the needs. We could always do more, but I do think that we have to take into account the the taxpayers. You know, everyone sitting up here is a taxpayer. Our houses have gone up in valuation as well. And I am grateful that we have actually decreased the tax rate, even though our housing valuations have gone up. I think that the four percent cost of living adjustment is well, well warranted. I'm very glad we were able to work that in. I'm hoping that that with the ARPA money, we'll be able to do more later this year. And I just want to thank my fellow councilmen for. For being so well versed in all of this and helping me through this as my first process.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Rappley, would you just briefly? Again, explain about the so called six hundred thousand surplus, which is not a surplus. Where this is, where it goes, what we do, if in fact, we aren't able to hire the necessary employees.
Yeah, again, the proposed budget through June thirty has showed that figure that meant revenue over expenditures. In the current operating budget, again, unexpended expenditures. You know, again, if you look in your financial packets for July, that's actually now four hundred and eighty five thousand. That's because we have a couple officers in the academy and we've had further expenditures for. For the operating budget that we're currently in. It's it's. It's not a surplus. Again, I've mentioned that here. It's and it's largely due to vacancies. I mean, Mr. Hada is looking for employees in Public Works. You know, Chief has a couple and and we have one in administration. So that it would not exist if we were fully staffed. And and again, if it takes the auditor to audit the actual numbers, which will happen next year, to determine if there's any surplus. And then, again, my understanding through the ordinance that was adopted in August two thousand thirteen, which is eleven oh six. It mentions the surplus in a certain amount to be transferred to supplemental streets and drainage.
Up to four hundred thousand, the first four hundred thousand, correct. And then anything after that, we can use it for streets and drainage also. It just depends on how much we have to cut back due to the expense that we're looking at into the new election. Okay, thank you.
Last time in the last five years, it was done in two thousand eighteen by resolution, where I believe four hundred and sixty thousand. The 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 council meeting after the the city auditor was done and closed the books. Then it was determined that was a surplus, but it was done, I think in two thousand eighteen. So it's on the the general fund. Five year history, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay, can I make a couple of comments real quick, if you don't mind? Last week, I was.
Mayor, I think there's someone waiting, if you can admit them.
Last week, I was leaving early in the morning on my usual route down West Avenue. And I saw a couple of our officers at the Castle Hills Christian Church on West Avenue. And I saw Pastor Morgan out there. And I stopped to make sure everything was okay. I was late to the scene and the officers had already taken care of the situation. And Pastor Morgan explained that there was a gentleman passed out under the tree. And if y'all know Pastor Morgan, this would not come as a surprise, but he wanted to go take him water. So he was going out there, check on him, take him water and noticed that he had a large machete next to him. Pastor Morgan realized that he was about to have children on campus. Very soon after this. Short after he observed the gentleman with the machete, he called the police. And as you might imagine, the police got there very quickly. I'm going to find out this gentleman had several warrants and he was arrested. And we don't know what would have transpired. But in my mind, I don't care. That was enough to warrant our police officers being there and taking care of the situation. As somebody driving by, you would say, I'm really proud. We have a great police department and they took care of the situation. What you don't know is the two officers that responded. One was Detective Munoz. Detective Munoz is one of the three police officers that we have is responsible for taking care of. CID, which I don't even know what it stands for. It's basically cases that they're going to go and work. And find out what exactly transpired, find the bad guys. That's done here upstairs at the police department. It's not done on patrol. Munoz was taking time away from his job as a detective to go out and patrol. The other officer that was there was Officer Singleton. Because Singleton's job is to do traffic. That's his primary job to help slow down influx of traffic and speeding, traffic infractions that we've had. And so the point of the story is to the untrained eye and uninformed eye. City of Castle Hills, police officers are doing a great job. But the reality is. Where they're trying to make up for the understaffing. Something else is getting by. And with the amount of people, you know, the amount of crime is happening in and around our city. I think it's short minded to be able to think that we're going to take away from that and say, it's okay, you're doing all right. I think. Sometimes we tend to forget, these are real people, they need breaks, they have to go and have their lunch as well. And the machines that are meant to protect our city. And so I'm hoping that council, as I've seen, is going to be supportive of making sure that our officers are fully funded. As I said at the last meeting, the difference between Castle Hills and neighborhood is having a great police department, a great department, a great court, a great administration. If it wasn't for them, we would just be a great neighborhood and not a great city. The last thing that I'll say is that. There was somebody that spoke at the last council meeting and said that we should do a thorough analysis to see if we need to cut back. And I got slightly offended at that because. We're trying to be the best possible stewards up here that we can. And if you looked around and took a survey of what actually we had in terms of employees. It would be abundantly clear that we have. In some cases, we have designed what we need. We don't always have that with our shortage in police and our shortage in the city offices. We have just enough to get by. In the city administration offices, we have a total of nine employees. Now, two of those are actually court clerks that are solely responsible for their administration of municipal court. So that really leaves seven employees, one of which is Mr. Rappley. So that's six employees and the city manager to operate a seven and a half million dollar budget. That includes everything that you all know that it takes a city to run. It's quite obvious that we are running on just about what we need to offer the services that you. And that we all have come to respect and demand. And I just want to make sure that. They're on the record that we have exactly what we need. And we need to make sure that we're supporting that to the fullest extent possible and it includes a four percent COLA. Especially considering that we didn't offer a COLA in twenty twenty one, we still had people that stayed. Did the work that they had to do for us. And that's not to say that there aren't twenty five other municipalities only in Brown Bear County. That doesn't include the rest of the state. There's no shortage of employers looking for great staff in the city municipal business. So thank you, Mr. Rappley and staff for putting the budget together and thank you to all the city employees that have made. Our time in Castle Hills the best that you possibly can.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I want to reiterate that as all of you said, it's good employee, good team. And and I can't do this job, you know, without essentially a leadership team. Combination of all of these folks here, Chief Zuniga, Mr. Harada, Chief Ludwig, Ms. Davis, Mr. Zamorone and Brenda. Who's on her third tour, maybe second as interim city secretary. And we appreciate all her years and years of experience. It's been. It's been awesome for her to come in and and help out from time to time. Because, you know, it's it's a. It's a difficult area for the organization, the city secretary's office, but we we appreciate your work, Ms. Craig. And on a personal note, counsel, I apologize for running late. I was rushing here and it was parent teacher night. And I was trying to meet every one of my teachers, my daughter's teachers, sorry. And I only got to meet two or three, so I have to circle back. And it was one of my goals to make sure I was able to make that parent teacher night. So then to get here on time to present this budget to y'all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I would move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash thirteen A. To adopt fiscal year twenty twenty three operating budget for the city of Castle Hills.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. We have a second one, Mr. May. We have a discussion. I think we've thoroughly discussed. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote. You saved me, Mr. Schnell. Ms. Craig.
Joe Isbrand.
Aye.
Beth Daines. Jack Joyce.
Aye.
Frank Paul. Kurt May.
Aye.
Mayor passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Thank you, Mr. Schnell for catching that. And next up, we have discussion or six point six discussion and possible action ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash one three dash B. To adopt the twenty twenty two tax rate for the city of Castle Hills by a record vote. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. As I mentioned, the proposed. Rate that was directed and has been incorporated into the FY. Twenty three now adopted budget was the rate of the zero point five zero eight six eight eight. That's what's included right now and what is now the adopted budget for your for your vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Gregory. Your name, address and three minutes, please.
Douglas Gregory, two one two Barcliff Drive. I want some of that salary money for the last eighteen years that I was on the council. I hope you can cut a check after this meeting. When I came on the council years ago, we were struggling with a large inflation that was going on now. And we had an intense study I did with Mayor Martin to see what the city did with inflation during periods of time. In nineteen eighty, when inflation rate was close to twenty percent. A maximum of five percent COLA was given at that time. The subsequent years, it plunged to almost nothing. The subsequent years, it plunged to almost nothing. And salaries were adjusted and salary increased. But salaries were adjusted to see what other cities were doing and the cola was the determinant of whether we needed more off on top of that salary adjustment. Early on, we have had several no new revenue tax rates. At least twice, we adopted that. And the reasoning was why is the homeowner being. Uh, penalized because of the increase of their home. And, but things have changed a lot in the last twenty years. The legislature and their brilliance. Have capped how much you can increase the property tax rate now to slightly under four percent. Whereas it used to be close to, I think it was nine, and then you had to have a vote if it went over nine percent. You could fiddle around with the tax rate back then. You couldn't have a disastrous mistake. Uh, gone undone. So having that, that no new revenue tax rate wouldn't work today. Because. Uh, we just don't know where inflation is gonna go. We just don't know who, what positions are going to be filled. There are a lot of uncertainties. I commend the mayor pro tem for early on understanding that there had to be some relief to the tax rate. Therefore, the middle rate was chosen. This middle rate increases the amount of money into the city, ninety one thousand dollars, according to Mr. Rappley. Which by the way, could have easily been taken care of if you had solar panels on all three office buildings here in the city. That savings would be anywhere between seventy five and a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars this year. So there's a savings that could have been done if we had used it. The one reason that things get out of hand. Under Mayor Harper, very few times was the budget readjusted. But we've had in the last few years, a series of constant amendments to the fiscal budget. Which by the end of the year, the budget hardly resembles what the budget was that was passed in the midyear. And what it is by the end of the year. So I would hope you all would try to cut back on the number of budget amendments. To the annual, to the budget for next year. It does make a difference. I appreciate Mr. May mentioning the collapse in the stock market today. He's absolutely correct. The reason that occurred is the inflation is far further out of control than anybody thought. The core rate's over six percent. The new rate is eight point three percent. It'll probably go lower as we go into the winter. And then we'll come roaring on back in the spring. So the fear is the interest rate increases, looking for three quarters of a cent next week. And perhaps two more after that will cause we go from a soft landing to a real crunch. I have no idea whether that's what's gonna happen and no one else does. We're just hoping you can slow down inflation. The council's got to understand, you have a train headed right towards you right now.
Mr. Gregory, we had the three minute alarm going.
And I'll sit down.
Okay, I was gonna give you a couple of seconds to wrap it up if you have anything, but.
You have a severe economic problem staring at you right now. That's going to get only harder to figure out what to do. As you go on the next six months, twelve months. This is just not something about whether we're reducing the tax rate to two pennies or one penny or saving this or saving that. It's gonna be a real problem to deal with this next year. It's a problem this year. The tax increase is gonna be nine percent. It's gonna be that. That's just the way it is. But the tax rate has gone down. So at least whatever increase that occurred. Took into, took into reflect the hardship that some people are having. And if you think your utility bills are something now. Wait till you see what natural gas is gonna do to you next year. Last two years, the year increase in Europe has been one thousand five hundred percent in an increase of natural gas prices that they are having in Europe. It's gone jump from two to eight here. So I don't know what your utility bill's gonna look like in winter time, but look out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Do we have any other discussion, counsel? Or I'm sorry, Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, just wanna make sure it's clear, the proposed tax rates, uh, it's in your summary of point five zero eight six. Gosh, eight eight, sorry, Ken. Uh, for the maintenance and operation of general government, uh, it is point. Four eight zero eight two seven on each one hundred valuation property. And the interest in sinking the debt service fund point zero two seven eight six one. Uh, valuation of property. Just wanna make sure you are clear on the breakdown M and O and INS for the proposed rate.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand.
Um, for discussion, um, Mayor and Counsel, I'd just like to briefly revisit where we began this back in July twelfth. Um, when we began these budget workshops and started looking at a possible budget. And if you'll recall at that time, it was at one of those first meetings, I believe it was the second one. Where we actually asked Mr. Rappley then to go back and look at what a budget would look like. If we adopted the no new tax rate. And versus the proposal that he had was presenting to us, which at that time was the voter approval tax rate. The information that came back to us was if we adopted that no new tax rate. We wouldn't just be cutting fat from a budget. We would be cutting bone. We can't afford to cut bone. That's what our city deserves and expects more than that. And part of the evolution of the budget and the proposal that we've just adopted was centered around. So how do we continue to fund what we need to, but continue to be fiscally responsible? And that's where this median rate came from. I don't know if anyone else is as wonky as I am to pick up the daily newspaper or at least the electronic version of it. And look every day at the ads that are in the paper that are required by the obtuse state law. That says you have to post all these notices about your tax rates. But if you go and look at many of the other cities that are out there, the proposals that they are looking at is to keep their tax rates where they currently are. And again, we could have done that here, which would have meant that we would be bringing in thirty percent more tax revenue off those new appraisals than we're going to. But we made a very concerted effort to say that is not acceptable to us, to our residents. And there is a way to be able to do this, um, without leaving it at that rate, which brought us to the median rate. So I just wanted to reiterate for historical purposes here, if nothing else. That we have looked at a no new tax rate. We have looked at the possibility of leaving the rate the way it is. And we believe that our residents deserve to have every consideration from us about keeping a lean budget. Of taking only what we need to be able to ensure the quality of the services that you receive. And that's what we're doing with the adoption of this budget and at this, the point that we will take a vote tonight on the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. We have a motion.
If, if there's no other, uh, comments from council mayor, then I would move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of. Zero point five oh eight six eight eight, which is effectively a two point eight percent increase in the tax rate. And adopt ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash thirteen B.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second? Mr. Joyce?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Not time for a vote, but a record vote, Ms. Craig.
Joe Isbrand.
Aye.
Beth Danes.
Aye.
Jack Joyce.
Aye.
Frank Paul. Kurt May.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Craig, and thank you, council, for, uh, what I believe is doing the right thing for our city. And next up, we have a discussion of possible action and a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget, Mr. Rappley.
And thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is the ratification of the tax rate that was just passed. That speaks to how much more revenue, revenue would be raised from property taxes than last year's budget. And the amount of two hundred one thousand seven eighty eight, which is a five point four two increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue be raised from new property added to the tax rule this year, twelve thousand five sixty eight. So this is a ratification that needs to be done as a result of, uh, what you've just passed.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor.
Mr. Isbrand.
I would move that we ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. May. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, um, Miss Danes. Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry, another record vote, don't we? Okay, I thought I heard record vote. All in favor again? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh, going to move just a little bit, Mr. Isbrand, um, if you don't mind. Uh, to six point nine, discussion of possible action on, and an ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash one three dash D. To add a three-way stop sign at Hurwick and Buckaroo to the list of stop streets. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, if you'll recall at the June council meeting, we, uh, took action at that time. To direct the city staff to assess whether it would be appropriate. To conduct a citywide assessment of our speed limits. And this is related to both item six point nine, which we're on now, and later when we get to six point one oh. Um, obviously, we've been in the budget process since then and that has, so that has not moved, uh, to the point of receiving a recommendation. From the city staff just yet. However, prior to that time, we had already been looking and had been contacted by residents on Hurwick. Who were particularly concerned about the issue of speeding that was taking place on their street. And when we talk about the speed limit, uh, issue in the next item, I think it will be, uh, an eyes wide open kind of issue that they're facing there on Hurwick. Um, so we undertook an assessment of the amount of volume, the amount of speeds, the time of day the traffic was taking place there. We also, um, had the city, uh, traffic engineer do an assessment. Well, the traffic engineer had determined that a three-way stop sign at Hurwick and Buckaroo may not be appropriate. Because it wasn't in and of itself addressing the situation. However, as we'll talk about in the next item, the traffic engineer also determined. That his recommendation would be if he had his way that the speeds on Hurwick would be reduced to twenty miles an hour. Because that is the extent of the issue that is taking place there. The city engineers also said that because of the continuity of our speed limits between twenty five and thirty. He would not in fact suggest that we actually do reduce the speed limit to twenty there. So it's with these considerations in mind that I believe it is appropriate. That we move forward with, uh, a, a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Hurwick and Buckaroo. And then I'll take up the speed, uh, item later. I would also point out that, um. The residents, uh, on, uh, Hurwick were kind enough to provide me with a petition signed by twenty seven people. Um, asking for us to consider this request for this, uh, three-way stop sign at Hurwick and Buckaroo. So with those, uh, those items, uh, in, in consideration. Um, I would move that we, uh, adopt ordinance number twenty twenty two dash nine dash thirteen D. To add a three-way stop sign at Hurwick and Buckaroo to the list of stop streets.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a discussion? Uh, Ms. Danes.
Um, I wanted to point out that I drive down Hurwick, um, not on a daily basis, but pretty darn often. Because I drive my child to Lee High School. Um, and that, there's a lot of speeding. And that is a huge cut through between Blanco and Jackson Keller. Um, and coming around that corner on Blanco and Hurwick, you have to, you have to watch. And I, I mean, just from driving it personally, not living on that street, but just driving it to get my child to school every day. I can see why the residents are concerned. And I imagine that a stop sign would actually be very helpful in slowing traffic down.
Mr. Rappley.
Uh, I don't know if we have residents who wanna speak on this agenda item.
Yes, we typically require you to sign up, but I'm, by all means, please. I know y'all waited. And if I would have known that y'all were here for this, I would have put it to the front.
Oh, that's fine, sir. I appreciate it. I'm, uh, Josh Bates. I'm at one oh two Hurwick. I've only been here for three years. I'm air force, so I'm a major in the air force. I'm a judge advocate. Uh, but I've been fortunate enough to meet the folks that live on Hurwick. You have an amazing community. Uh, I'll identify just that they raise their hands to identify that they're here for this issue. So it's pretty significant for them. Uh, I wanna first thank Mr. Isbrand. Every time I've reached out to him, he's been immediately receptive, responsive. He helped us put in the three-way stop that is at Dan Yew and Hurwick. So we have already attempted to address the issue once before. He helped us with that. It has had some effect in slowing folks down, but I don't think it's enough. It's a significant cut through, obviously. As, um, councilperson Danes has identified. And we believe a three-way stop is important despite the recommendation from the traffic engineer. The reason for that, I think, is even if you lower the speed limit, you're not gonna catch the folks that wanna speed. They're willing to disregard that. But a lot of times folks are aware of the property damage that can occur to their vehicle when you do go through a stop sign. And they're, they're, they're generally hesitant, even if it's a rolling stop. It brings folks to a stop in the middle of the street. Whereas the intersection of Dan Yew and Hurwick is, is, um, it's significantly further down the street. So you have a lot more opportunity to get up to speed as you go down Hurwick. I will highlight that, uh, Yolanda was here, is the one who went around door to door to get, uh, the signatures on the petition. Those twenty seven signatures. Our first time attempts, nobody that she asked on Hurwick declined, uh, to sign the petition. So it, that's simply just a representation of what, you know, one morning can accomplish, uh, by talking to the residents there. I, I think about the significance of.
You might wanna just get a little bit closer to the, the microphone.
Yeah, is this better? Okay. Okay, so, uh, I mean, I'm a judge advocate. Normally, I, I, I sit down, I know when to quit talking, but we do have some residents here who I think deserve. Uh, to be represented, that they took the time to come out and be heard on the issue and, and, you know, fortunately, um. Or I'm honored anyway to, to be the mouthpiece for it. What I will say is. You, you guys are dealing with some significant issues. A seven and a half million dollar budget is important, but the safety of the children. Who would like to be able to treat that street as a neighborhood street and not a, uh, four lane highway. The way that it's been treated, uh, is a significant issue, even in comparison to a seven and a half million dollar budget. There are residents who even within the last week were almost hit. Uh, the ability to walk your pets down the street is important. Um, so what I would say is subject to, uh, any questions from the members of us. Cause we're certainly willing to talk about our experiences on Hurwick and dealing with the traffic. I'll stop there and I'll let you, you vote on what I think is an obvious issue and a relatively simple solution. Uh, while I'm here, because I wasn't on record for speaking, I'll go ahead and address six point one zero. There's not a resident who signed this position petition, who's also not in favor of reducing the speed limit to twenty five miles per hour residentially. Whether in, in Castle Hills in total or, or merely on Hurwick. And then lastly, although it's not on the agenda, I'll raise for you to, to consider and potentially be raised later that the current. Um, speed limit postings are very close to the intersections of Blanco and Jackson Keller. They probably need to be pulled back at least two properties, uh, from the intersection. Right now, I think they're currently one property away. And by the time you turn the corner at each of those, you don't have time to notice the speed limit posting. And then as you've noticed in major municipalities, a lot of those speed postings are bordered in red reflective traffic tape. So that, those would be my additional comments. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Major Bates, and thank you for your service. Um, council, do we have, Mr. May?
Just a comment. What I like about this proposition is it's a perfect example of a, a distinct neighborhood. Coming together and making a proposition. We've had a, I hopefully it's a long tradition, but it started a few years ago where one size does not fit all. One neighborhood might want sidewalks, another not. One may want a three-way stop, others not so much. And I'm familiar with that area because I've had to visit people in properties where when you back out of the driveway. You're really risky either running over somebody or getting rear ended. And so, uh, for that reason alone, I think it's good, but also there are children in that area. Anything we can do to make it safer, I, I'm gonna vote for that. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any other discussion? Okay, we already have a motion of Mr. May or a motion of Mr. Isbrand and a second by Mr. May. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh, next up we have item six point one zero, discussion of possible action ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash one three dash E. To reduce the speed limit from thirty miles an hour to twenty five miles an hour on Hurwick Drive, Mr. Isbrand.
So, um, for the benefit of the audience, these require two different ordinances because of the way that they're written into our code. I think I've already emphasized and you've heard from the residents, um, their interest in this. The traffic engineer again in doing his assessment, uh, said that it actually warranted reducing the speed to twenty miles an hour. I don't think anyone feels that that would probably be the means to take at this point. But it does indicate the need for action to be, uh, taken to address the situation, um, on Hurwick. I would also note that over the course of the last week or two, that I've walked the entire block of Hurwick. I would also note that over the course of the last week or two, that I've walked the entire block of Hurwick, talked to as many people as I can there. And found, as Mr. Bates said himself, a similar sentiment. That the residents there are really looking for relief that we need to give them. So with that in mind, I would request adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash thirteen E. To reduce the speed limit from thirty miles an hour to twenty five miles an hour on Hurwick Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. A second by Mr. May. That's some discussion. Mr. Paul.
Address this to Chief Zuniga. We talked about reducing some speed limits before in other areas. And I want to know if this has to be passed by. T-Dod or somebody else that has control beyond us or anything. I remember we were talking about in Fox Hall one time and we couldn't do it because without going through a whole scenario, if you remember. Right, and I know they're not, but I just figured that it would, it would be the same type of thing. But we have no state, well, we got the authority right here.
The city council has the authority to reduce the speed limit to not lower than twenty five all on its own. There are other steps required if the council were to try to implement the city engineer recommendation to go to twenty. But twenty five is well within your discretion on a street like Hurwick. Couldn't do that on Northwest Military or West Avenue.
Thank, thank you, sir. Do we have a discussion? Ms. Danes.
I'd just like to mention, I, I agree with, with our speaker on Hurwick. Who represents the majority of the street, I believe, that. Will to address it with public works that may be moving the speed limit signs. And putting reflective tape around them in addition to putting up the twenty five mile an hour speed limit signs. Maybe additional twenty five mile an hour speed limit signs is warranted on this street, given the problems that they're having with cut throughs. But I am in favor of that.
Thank you, Ms. Danes.
Yeah, and, and Ms. Danes, I just mentioned, Mr. Rappley and I had, have already walked the street and begun those discussions as well. Based on the good feedback that we've had from residents. So thank you for the observation, the recommendation.
Any other discussion? Okay, the one, a couple of things I want to add. Several years ago, we had somebody from. The regional, regional mobile mobility trend, I can't even remember what the name of it is now, but. They're encouraging walkability and they did a walkability study. And one of the takeaways that I had was that she said that in walkable neighborhoods, they say that twenty is plenty. Meaning that difference between twenty and thirty miles an hour in that stretch of. Road is almost insignificant. You're not going to get there anywhere faster because of five or ten miles an hour. In that small of a stretch of road. What I do have a little bit of potential concern is that we get into pockets of speed limits. Where it makes it difficult for our officers to ascertain which streets are what and to know that off the top of their head. Obviously, right now, we're just talking about Hurwick. But I can say, I think that my colleagues can agree that as soon as other streets find out that there's twenty five mile an hour speed limit. They're going to want that as well. What I would ask my colleagues to consider, and Mr. Rappley as well, is that we consider this as a holistic approach to the city. Instead of having a street here, a street there. And I guess potentially making it a little bit more difficult for our officers and for people driving in the city. Because you're not from Castle Hills and you drive down one street and you're lost and you come back up the other one, there's a different street speed limit sign. I don't see that, the uniformity that we're trying to build as a city. Chief Zuniga, I don't know if you have any comments, because I'm not the one that's patrolling the streets. I'll defer to you, chief, but again, that's just my concern. Because I, I appreciate y'all bringing your whole block together and everybody buying in. I think that sends a very clear message. But I imagine that this will kind of be something that is going to come up again pretty frequently. Because it is something that's reasonable and something that I think will help slow down the people that speed through on your streets. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, I appreciate your comments and would just reiterate that this is the reason I brought forth the motion at the June meeting. That we asked city staff to assess whether a holistic approach to speed limits of. This twenty five or thirty is appropriate for the city. And recognize that, yes, there will be others that will have a similar interest in this. And as we're a way to report back from city staff, I think that would help to give us the direction that you're inclined to be looking for here.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table. We have a second. All in favor. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you all for being here. Next up, we have, I'm going to go back to six point eight, discussion of possible action ordinance number twenty twenty two dash oh nine dash one three dash C. By the city council of the city of Castle Hills approving the crime control and prevention district operating budget for fiscal year. Beginning January first, twenty twenty three, and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Chief Zuniga.
Mayor, counsel, just can keep it brief. If you have any questions on August twenty fourth. The crime control prevention district board members all met. After reviewing the proposed budget for the crime control board. After, after reviewing some discussion, the, the budget was adopted unanimously. By the five, five board members that were present at the board meeting. There was really nothing too much of a change on the proposed budget. The only thing that was increased on, on any of the line items was. For future purchases of, you know, like radios, vehicles, equipment and so forth. To take into account for the inflation of rising cost of, you know, cars and so forth.
Thank you, chief. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the ordinance number twenty twenty two dash thirteen dash nine dash C.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. Paul. Any discussion? Mr. Joyce.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a quick question for chief. Chief, when your unassigned fund balance, if I'm reading it for twenty twenty three. It looks like six seventy four, four thirty three. Does that mean that that's six hundred seventy four thousand dollars? It's just kind of in the bank and not particular to any, not associated with any particular project.
So all of these, this, that, that unassigned fund balance on top of the rest of the, the column there is all, which totals a one point three. Is, is what's.
Right, but the, the question I'm asking is that is literally unassigned, just like it says. So it's money in the bank. I'm, I just want to clarify that. Okay, okay, thank you. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have discussion of possible action on the position of a city treasurer. I brought this up, counsel, because it's been a long time since, I don't even remember ever having the discussion of city treasurer. And I felt like it was prudent to discuss if it's necessary, who's qualified for that. I believe Mr. Gregory was our last city treasurer, and I don't even know when that actually transpired. Or he was appointed or nominated or confirmed for that matter. So I wanted to bring this up to have a conversation about who it should be and get council's input. Because I think it's important that we have somebody keeping an additional eye on the financial well-being of our city. And I know that is good fiduciary stewards, y'all want the same. Mr. May, you have a comment?
Yes, first of all, I know it should not be me. It should be someone that has a bird's eye view. Of what we may be facing in subsequent years and budgetary constraints. But I also think it needs to be someone that is aware of prevailing patterns. In employee salaries. So I mean, there's a lot of things under this heading and someone in the financial sector that actually knows banking.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Isbrand.
Yeah, Mr. May, I, I'd concur with your comments wholeheartedly. It's my understanding that it is not required that the city treasurer be a member of the city council. But could be a member of the community, could be a city employee for that matter. I know in the past when we've had vacancies on any of our boards and commissions, we have always put a call out, if you will. Asking residents of our community or any interested party, if they are interested in participating. To submit their credentials, if they will, for our consideration. And I think that might be warranted in this case too, is to seek out those in our community. Who have expertise in this area, who would be willing to offer their services. And give the, the public the chance to, to weigh in on anyone who would like to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. I completely agree. Mr. Joyce.
Yes, as do I. I don't have a lot to say, but I really think we need somebody who understands the industry. And can look at things from a big picture standpoint and immediately catch whether or not there's issues. So yes, I think we need somebody.
Mr. Schnell, please.
Let me point out that the local government code does have two provisions that are relevant to this consideration. One provision is section twenty two point oh seventy one of the local government code. Which in part says, in addition to the members of the governing body of the municipality. The other officers of the municipality are the secretary, treasurer, et cetera. So the, the local government code specifically says that the treasurer is an officer of the city. Section twenty two point oh seven five of the local government code provides for the bond and duties of the treasurer. The first subsection A says the treasurer of the municipality shall execute a bond. The bond to be in favor of the municipality, inform an amount required by the governing body of the municipality. Have security approved as sufficient by the governing body. And be conditioned that the treasurer will faithfully discharge the duties of the office. Subpart B says, the treasurer shall receive and securely keep all money belonging to the municipality. The treasurer shall make all payments on the order of the mayor attested by the secretary of the municipality under the seal of the municipality. The treasurer may not pay an order unless the face of the order shows that the governing body directed the issuance of the order. And shows the purpose for which it is issued. Subpart C, the treasurer shall render to the governing body a full statement of the receipts and payments. The statement must be rendered at the governing body's first regular meeting in every quarter and at other times as required by the governing body. And then finally, the treasurer shall perform such other acts and duties as the governing body requires. This historically, as I recall, has been a position that was held by Mr. Gregory. I do agree that there is not a requirement in what I read, that, that the treasurer be on a member of the governing body. Or even an employee of the city. However, in lots of cities, the city's finance director also wears the city treasurer hat. You all have vacancy in that position at this time, and I know Mr. Rappley has been looking for someone to fill that vacancy.
Mr. Schnell, can I ask you a quick question? Based on the local government code, it would appear that the position is slightly more onerous than I originally thought.
Yes, and, and with substantially more responsibility than I think the average person would have thought. And so that, that's why I think in many communities, the finance director does serve as the treasurer. That way, that person is under the direct supervision of the city manager. And is, is someone here essentially not twenty four seven, but five days a week.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Isbrand.
If, can I ask a question, Mr. Rappley? How are we doing the search for a finance director? As it pertains to the possibility of considering them for this position?
Well. Councilman, there's, there's some things we've done sort of to modify that. I know extensively, we had the finance director position out there for almost a year. And I think, I think we got two applicants and one that basically, you know, had no experience. So, and, and you know, what we've done actually is change Ms. Davis's role and added to some of her duties. In the finance office and have compensated for that. And then we have Ms. Vicky Wallace on board to help as an advisor. And to assist Ms. Davis, especially to ensure we're timely reconciling. The monthly budget here to y'all to provide. So it's kind of a combination of, of Ms. Davis right now with some of the additional duties she has taken on. That probably the finance director would have done in this case, and then assistance by Ms. Wallace. And right now, that seems to be working pretty effectively and actually has saved some money. Because it's not actually a, a full-time position with benefits right now. So we are paying a little bit more per hour for her services. But I've also changed Ms. Davis's duties in regards to the finance office, so.
So I think the answer to the question, at least in the way, for the reason I was asking it, is holding off on this. Waiting for a finance director to come on board is probably going to be a long wait. So holding off is not an alternative here. That's, that's really what I wanted to understand, whether there was a short-term resolution to that or not. It sounds like the answer is no, probably.
And so again, I think if you recall the salary survey that we did, that the, the average. Around the surrounding cities has moved up exponentially for a salary. I know some cities have, it just in the area have two or three openings right now for finance directors. And they've had to go above six figures to try to retain someone who has. At least ten years of accounting experience, municipal government. So Ms. Davis has been doing a great job since we modified her role here in the organization. And, and Mrs. Wallace helps out considerably with reconciliations.
Yeah, counsel. Do we have a direction or, Mr. Mr. Schnell, would it be appropriate for us to put a call out for qualifications?
I think that's within the purview of your city manager. He's indicated that. He has developed a plan that he thinks will work, at least on a short-term basis. But basically, if the council wants to give some direction on that, that would be fine. There's no requirement that y'all take action tonight. And it may be best to, you know, kind of, y'all just kind of look at this and think about this. And we put it back on the agenda at the regular meeting in October. That way, Mr. Rappley perhaps can come up with a recommendation. Or if any members of the council have any ideas, they can give those directly to Mr. Rappley. And, you know, he can come back with a follow-up report at your next regular meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Schnell. Okay, Mr. Joyce.
The only thing I suggest is we might take a look at the salary that we're offering. Recollection is on Mr. Rappley's sheet where he compared us to other cities. We were in that category. We were a little bit low. If my memory serves, Mayor, and it may not be the case, but it might not be a bad idea to have a look at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, in that case, we will let this agenda's item go if there's no action and proceed to the last one. Okay, thank you so much. Well, in that case, we will let this agenda item go if there is no action and proceed to the last one. Six point one two discussion impossible action to establish an economic development committee. Mr. Joyce?
Last but not least, thank you, Mayor. Economic development is something I've put a lot of thought into over the last year or so. And I think it's something that really could be very, very helpful to our city. First, let me thank Mayor Pro Tem Isbrand for his thoughts and ideas with respect to the topic. He and I sat down a time or two and had a very good conversation. Also, some members of the Business Association, especially Charlie Wile, who really had taken an interest in, were very helpful in developing these ideas. But it it sort of germinated about a year ago when we had our speakers forum associated with the comprehensive plan, and we had a couple of speakers who spoke on economic development. We learned about the benefits and requirements for a successful program. In your packet is is just a few thoughts that that may be of interest to you, and I really think it's something that could be of quite a benefit to our city. To try to give a definition of what economic development is, one of the, I guess, better definitions I've seen is it's economic development is defined as what leaders need to do to enhance wealth building opportunities for their constituents and build a quality of place that attracts and retains residents and visitors. So it's something that would be a long-term thing, I think. And I believe that would it would help in a lot of different ways in our city. As we've seen over the last few months, there's constant upward pressure on the budget, and that's not going to stop. You know, we've got to keep rewarding our staff, and again, there's the step increases and the colas and all of that. Not to mention inflation at this point in time, as Mr. Gregory reminded us. So there's a lot of upward pressure on the budget at the at the hall at that time. But if we, what it suggests is supportive businesses, encouraging of businesses and partnering with businesses that might increase the sales tax and the business side of the ad valorem revenue and take some pressure off the taxpayers. So it addressed the uncertainty of our revenue stream. I mean, it's it's kind of okay right now, and during COVID it wasn't. But we have our valuations coming up, so the revenue was not so bad. But we've all lived through areas and times here in Castle Hills where the revenue wasn't so good. I remember back in the two thousand four, two thousand five era, the council really, really struggled to balance the budget. And I think it can also, if we can increase revenue, help avoid past failures meeting infrastructure and facilities requirements. It would provide potential to fund community amenities. And perhaps the big idea is that it gives us a chance to be proactive rather than reactive with respect to our financial situation. Rather than just reacting to things, we're out there trying to control who comes in and help businesses grow, recognize when we they want to retain, help them if they want to expand in our community. So I think the first thing we probably need to do, if you all agree that this is a good idea, is establish a team, which I'm interpreting as a committee. And I've written down in your packet six or seven things that we might charge the team with to look at and report back to us on an annual basis. So at this point, really, I'm just I'm just looking for thoughts and ideas. I don't know if it's appropriate to have some sort of recommendation by council that this committee be established, however that's done legally. Some sort of affirmation. But I would also like to ask for support from council members, staff members and community members to suggest those who might be members of this committee. I see something, I see it as a little bit different than the typical committees we have here, which are wonderful. But this is a long-term effort. And I'm thinking that the appointments might need to be a little bit longer than the typical two-year deal that we have now. But I mean, this is all open for discussion. It's a long-term thing. Ideally, we would get this thing in my mind up and running by the first of the year, so we have some time to think about it. But anyway, those are my thoughts, and if I would appreciate y'all's thoughts to see if it's if it's something worth pursuing and and how we might go about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have any discussion, Council? Okay, well, if there's no discussion, I'll jump in, and I think it's a great idea, Mr. Joyce. I think it goes hand in hand with what the Castle Hills Business Association is trying to do, and I feel like it's a very it it could be a great accoutrement, if you will, to work with the Castle Hills Business Association and figure out how we can support our businesses and do more. I've looked through your proposal. I think it's great. I think what I personally like to see, and Mr. Schnell might agree, is to see how the team is being developed and who appoints him. And I don't know if Mr. Schnell is going to tell me that there's something that already prescribes that, Mr. Schnell?
Mayor, I I think what Mr. Joyce has prepared in his one-page summary is very helpful. It it seems to me that before you create the committee, only create the committee, rather than just doing that, I think the council should decide what the charter, what the program for the committee is, what the council expects the committee to provide. One of the nonprofits I'm a a member of a board on has has adopted charters for each of its committees. A one-page document, I think what Mr. Joyce has here could be turned into a charter for the Castle Hills Economic Development Committee and could be brought back at the next council meeting with a a proposal to not only create the committee, but also adopt its charter. It's it's kind of working what the what the council would like it to to do. And I do think that the way the council has selected members of other committees seems to be working very well, where each elected member of the of the council appoints a member. And the mayor has a different function. A committee like the Economic Development Committee, I would recommend that each member of the council, including the mayor, have an appointment that coincides with that member's service on the council. There can be continuity in that case. But it it's a way to involve our community, and this is a committee that I think could be made up primarily of residents. I would also suggest the council consider having one elected member of the council be kind of the council liaison to help guide that committee, and more importantly, to report back to the council the activity of that committee on a periodic basis.
And Mr. Schnell, a quick question for you. Being that we're a bedroom community by and large, would it be appropriate for us to have somebody that could be a economic development professional outside of the city of Castle Hill be on the committee?
I think that's a decision made by the folks who appoint the committee. There's not a requirement on state law for this kind of an ad hoc committee to be comprised comprised only of residents of the community. But we have a a community with a lot of people with diverse skills and abilities. I think that Mr. Joyce can probably attest to the quality of the folks who are active participants in the comprehensive plan review. So we may have a lot of depth. We may have a big bench in our community. But if there is someone outside the community who would be a good fit, I don't see any prohibition against that.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Joyce, the last thing I'll say is I have the framework for a charter when I put together the ERCOT Advisory Board, the statewide one, so I'm happy to send it over and or work with you to expedite it because I know it can be a little bit tedious to get into the weeds.
That'd be great, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I just suggest that we have two items on the next agenda, one being a fairly broad resolution of support from the city council, which which we can deal with quickly. And then the other one would be maybe the details of the charter or committee as we deem appropriate.
That would be at the next council meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May. I'll I'll take that as a motion. Okay.
Second it.
Okay. I I I interpreted it as a motion. Okay, that's a motion, Mr. Joyce, the second. Do we have any other discussion?
Well done, Mr. Joyce. Well done. Great idea.
Thank you. All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, Council. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Okay, I think that is it. We jumped around a little bit, so remind me if I missed anything, but we will proceed to announcements by Mayor and council members on items of community interest. Mr. Isbrand?
Lots of stuff going on in Castle Hills this fall. I certainly won't mention all of them because I know y'all will mention some too, but the two I would remind residents of is October eighth is our shred event, Saturday, October eighth. Bring those secure documents that you'd like shredded, and the city will take care of them for you. And Saturday, October fifteenth is our heavy trash drop-off, second one this year. So if you have those big things that have been stuck in the garage that you're trying to figure out how to get rid of, Saturday, October fifteenth, the city will take them off your hands, bring them by City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
I think a lot's been said about our employees and our staff and they really are exceptional, and I'm very proud to have to be serving them and serving the citizens. And I think that people, I appreciate the citizens showing up tonight. I just wish we can get them back in to come in the council meetings because there's so much to learn about our city. There's so much going on with our city besides just getting an occasional off-the-wall email about stuff. We have too many positive things. Councilman Isbrand just mentioned about all the things going on. And again, we need to thank Judy and Norma and everybody who's put together with the community organization. It's been a great help, and we and it's going to be a full fall, like like Joe says. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
October fourth, National Night Out, right here in this chamber. The Historical Society will be putting on their displays that we worked so hard for about a year, and we might add a few more things. So hope to see everyone right here and then what's going to happen out in the Commons.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick note, folks, that our Parks and Projects Committee met over the weekend and deliberated over some of the priorities for the Commons, and so we're going to work with with Mr. Rapley and his engineering team over the next few weeks and next month come back with a proposal for you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines?
Yes, I also have an announcement partnering on the October eighth, Saturday, October eighth day, which is the shred day at ten AM, I believe. So starting at eight AM, we're going to offer breakfast in the Commons and we're hoping that the entire community will come out for a trash cleanup and beautification day starting at eight thirty. Mayor Trevino and I have talked about this, and I am inviting all of the churches in the community and all of the schools in the community to participate because, as one of our citizens said, the people who come here for for church services and for school, and they have their businesses here, are also a part of our community, and we've gotten a lot of interest in helping out in little ways like that. So we're going to do a trash pickup on Saturday, May eighth, and we hope that everyone will come out and and help us clean up. October eighth.
So Ms. Daines, I think we're meeting in the Commons eight. Okay, if there for eight o'clock for food, and then if you don't want to food and you'd rather sleep, you can get there at eight thirty. And we'll have more plans on that later. Thank you so much for spearheading. This is y'all saw that I went and cleaned up a little bit of graffiti, and everybody decided they wanted to support and help, and I said, okay, well, let's do it. So that really excited to have everybody come together. Thank you so much for spending your time with us. I know that there's probably other places you'd rather be and things you'd rather be doing, but I appreciate you being here. My parting request is if you see a city staff member, thank them for everything they're doing. They're not here for the money. They're here to serve. That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Rapley's been waiting patiently.
Mayor and Council, we had a few items that probably need to be added to this agenda. But I figured we had a heavy agenda already because of budget and tax, so we're going to have to have a special city council meeting later this month on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, if possible.
Okay.
Well, hopefully. I'll send out a notice and everything.
We'll check with council members' availabilities to make sure that we have a quorum of a special meeting. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion by Mr. May to adjourn. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Paul. I thought everybody wanted to stay here. All in favor? Unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. It's eight thirty-six. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here with us.